Common Council for June 5th, 2018 to order. And the first item on the agenda is the roll call. Mike, the first item on the agenda is the roll call.
All right. Berke?
Present.
Olson?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Hume?
Ramsey?
Here.
Rashard?
Here.
Keel is absent and Wes?
Present.
We have six present, one that we're expecting and one who is having a good time.
Well, we got quorum, so all right. So the next item is the closed session. I did a motion to get into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to get into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes and we are in a closed session. Welcome you all. Welcome you all to the City Hall and
That's our job.
We are on the comments from the citizens present part of the meeting. So anybody who wants to speak, you have three minutes per speaker, so. Yes, Matt, run.
Just a heads up, I'm not sure how it's going to be handled tonight, but the TIF request for Middleton Center, just a very quick statement. I don't know that there's a business downtown that doesn't support getting that building filled up from a retail standpoint. The word fair was used at finance in terms of X versus Y. The entity that's probably closest to that would be, this is public hearing.
This is public comment.
Public comment, thank you. A little noise here. Would be Long Table, who's already in the building, that paid full rents way back when. I think it's, speak for Matt and say, he just wants more tenants in the building. He doesn't care that somebody else gets a better deal. He just wants more tenants in the building. And that attitude is very prevalent downtown, too. To quote some of Eileen's verbiage, you know, "empty space begets empty space." So whatever can be done ultimately down the road to help out the rest of downtown would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the comments part of the section here, and we are beyond 7:32, and I'm going to open the public hearing part of this, and this the renewal of applications for 2018, 19, Class A and Class B intoxicating liquor, Class A and Class B fermented malt beverage, and Class C wine licenses. Anybody who wants to speak, part or against it? While there are no takers, I'm going to close this part of the public hearing. We are going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to separate out the approval of the common council minutes from the consent agenda.
All right, so you, okay, so you want to, the audit of the bills separate from the minutes, okay.
I would like that, please.
I'll move approval of the audit of the bills.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor of this motion to approve the audit of the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so that part of the consent agenda passes. So now the approval of the common council minutes. Robert?
The reason I wanted to separate this out, there's a minor, but I think fixable typo, in correction, I guess I would say. Basically, when we convened into closed session according to the meeting minutes, we were moved by Wes, seconded by Ramsey, who was not present, so. I'm sorry, this is convene into closed session one under the common council minutes from May 15th, 2018.
Yeah, I didn't do that.
And I think we should probably
That needs to be corrected.
Correct that, to say that Ramsey was not the person who seconded us convening into closed session, since he was not present. We just have to figure out who it was who did that.
From the tape, yeah.
Good job.
If we say the, under the open session, said moved by Wes, seconded by Berke, convene into closed session, should say open session.
Yeah. We could fix that, too.
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Boy, we really needed Lori back.
Yeah.
So with that correction, you want to make a motion to approve?
With those two corrections, yes, I would make a motion, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes with those corrections.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. So now we are on to a big part of the meeting here. This is the recognition of long time.
That warming notice for motion on January 1st.
Okay, so Matt made a suggestion that could be, somebody make a motion from the things which came out of the closed session.
Sorry?
Go back to January 1st.
Yes.
Session of authorizing, I think we're looking for a motion to reinstitute the offers on the two Clark Street properties at the previous
And to file the relocation plan with DOA. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do you understand the motion?
Okay, we don't.
To reaffirm the original offers.
Offer and to file the relocation plan with DOA.
That's related to the topics we discussed in closed session.
Right, so that's for the, the properties that are under consideration for purchase by the city to reaffirm the council's original approval of the purchase for the appraised values and authorize the relocation.
Right.
Thank you. You have to move the second.
Okay, any questions or comments on this one?
Just a comment, we will then put together a revised purchase agreement for both properties pre-asked to the council approval, hopeful approval on June 19th.
Wonderful. Any other question or comments? Okay, then, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Okay, we are now on to the recognition of the longtime volunteer committee members. We are honoring today, today the city of Middleton is honoring the best and the greatest of its citizens who have volunteered their time, talent, and expertise freely to make our city as one of the best places to live in the United States. Each one of them has served on one or more of the city committees for at least nine years. One of them has served for 25 years. Who is the greatest? In my mind, the greatest is the person, not the richest person, nor the strongest, nor the most popular, nor the president of big corporation, not highly educated or one who has the most friends. It is the one who serves the fellow citizens without any expectation of return. Every one of you have done exactly that. Middleton is fortunate to have large number of such citizens who are willing to serve, and we all are, ought to be proud of it. So now you have all the proclamations already in the packet, or you would have gotten it. So, so I'm going to read these in alphabetical order, and so the way we are going to do it is the, I would like the honorary to stand up, or maybe even come forward here, and the family to stand up as well, and then they say, they have served on various committees, the person, the committee they served on, and they are also welcome to make comments or anything which they want to do, and they will actually give this certificate to them, and then in the end, I will give them the clock, so. And then we will have a picture, so. So I'm going to start this with this, with this gavel, which special gavel, somebody gave it to me, so this is, this is the honoring of our longtime volunteers here. This has never been used before, so.
Quite festive.
All right, we're going to start with Bill Byers. Is Bill here? So, well, I'm going to read some part of it, and in any case, I have served with Bill Byers on the Commission on Youth, and he truly cares about youth. Bill Byers has faithfully and honorably served the city of Middleton and the Public Safety Committee for past 10 years, from 28 to 2018, and the Commission on Youth for the past 14 years. Bill's knowledge, experience, and hard work, Middleton has benefited immensely. Chuck, do you want to say anything about Bill?
Is Bill there?
Nope.
He's not.
Oh.
Okay.
I would like to say just a couple of words about Bill, if I might, and not in his volunteer and committee capacity, but as a city employee. Bill is clearly one of our finest. He is our lead crew foreman on the streets crew. He organizes things, he is an electrical engineer, so when traffic signals go down in the middle of the night, he is an invaluable resource in getting things back up and running, making streetlights work, and, and just keeping the crew on task and motivated. So I just want to give a, a little bit of word of thanks to Bill from that capacity as well.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
And I'll be very brief, I, you caught me unaware as mayor, I'm sorry. He's probably watching on TV.
Well, I, I did ask everyone to be ready for it, so.
All right, I'm ready. Anyhow, I did serve with Bill both on the Youth Commission, and as you mentioned, he was on the Public Safety Committee, and he will be missed. His expertise in just gathering up different ideas from members of our community and bringing them to those meetings was invaluable. So thanks, Bill.
Let's give a big hand. The second one we are honoring now is the Brian Kobinski. Brian is here?
Yes, sir.
You want to come forward, please?
No, I'm on my way.
Okay, it's, okay, all right, is your family, anybody, you know, okay, all right. Anybody you want to recognize?
Well, I would like to say a few words about Brian Kobinski.
Could I read this part first, and then I give you a chance, just for a second?
Of course. You can't shut me up now, mayor.
All right, go ahead, you come first.
No, you go first.
Okay. Okay, I have heard great things from Brian from our police chief, which he's going to tell you a little bit soon, as well as from others. You may not know it, but he worked for the FBI, and we are lucky to have him. Besides that, Brian Kobinski has faithfully and honorably served the city of Middleton and the Police Commission for the past 15 years, and Brian's knowledge, experience, and hard work, Milton has benefited immensely. Chief?
Thank you, mayor. And, yeah, I, I have worked with Brian for many years, when he was an FBI agent and I was a young detective, and we were running around Dan County, and Brian was always very kind to me as an FBI agent and as a mentor, and his time on the, oh, you're probably thinking of some of those times we were running around Dan County. Anyway, his time on the Police Commission has been time well spent. He's served several different chiefs and helped select several different chiefs. His advice to me as a Police Commission member has really been helpful, and I'm, I'll miss him being on the Police Commission. Thanks, Brian.
Let's go, Brian. Okay, so the next one we honor is Chuck Nunn. Chuck, you have your family or friends, anybody you want to recognize? So I have served with Chuck on bike, pad, and transit committee. He has given so much to our, to our city. Chuck Nunn has faithfully and honorably served the city of Milton and the Public Works Committee for the past 18 years, and the Parks Recreation and Forest Forestry Commission for the past two years. In addition to that, Chuck has served on pedestrian, bike, and transit committee for two years, and Stormwater Utility Board for two years, and we can start with the, with Sean. Anybody, Sean, you want to say anything, and then it will be PRFC, and then it will be Mark, and then it will be Stormwater.
I hope Chuck doesn't mind hearing it. I, to keep it brief, I'll say I've appreciated Chuck from the viewpoint of working on the Public Works Committee, being a subject matter expert, being in the field, and knowledgeable in areas that I am not, a subject matter expert, has been very valuable to me. Chuck lives, eats, breathes, and sleeps the city of Middleton. I think he wakes up daily wondering how to make this place better, and he's exactly the kind of guy you want on your side. So, thanks, Chuck.
Maybe an unknown fact is I, I'm pretty sure Chuck was the only Middleton resident I knew coming to interview here for the city, and has helped my transition into my role being on the Park Rec Forestry Commission, and we'll continue to work together in Chuck's work with the Friends of the Dog Park, and echoing what Sean said, Chuck's always talking about how we can make Middleton better, and that's, I think, what you'll hear throughout the night of the committee members and their roles. So, thanks, Chuck.
Thank you. Mark?
Well, I've known Chuck a long time as well, since before he joined the Ped Bike Transit Committee, which he's served on since the beginning. It's been actually about half a dozen years that he's served on the Ped Bike Transit Committee, and I believe he's also served on SWAB, Stormwater Utility Board.
Yep, yep, so you can talk about both?
Yeah, so maybe that's, maybe we could
Oh, well, Mike is talking about SWAB.
Oh, he is, okay, but I, it, so, so Chuck has very capably served the city in, in at least four different committee capacities, and we are all appreciative. I will never forget Chuck's stories, and specifically a picture he shared once of how he wiped out on a trail in the conservancy. And so he is, has, has personally dedicated time and experience, in this case, in terms of making bicycle and pedestrian facilities safer in the community, and I am very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I'd just like to add that Chuck gave nonsense a good name. Chuck also worked very closely with Penny on a number of projects as a consultant, and has served the city well at a relatively low cost when we've hired him as a consultant as well, and he persevered with, with Penny, and that is no small task. Those of you who remember Penny know what I'm talking about, and so does Chuck, you can see it in his smile. Thank you, Chuck.
All right, let's go, Chuck. Mr. Mayor?
I, I just want to say something about Chuck, too. I've served with Chuck the last seven years on Public Works, and one committee he doesn't serve on, but I know he's a great patron, is the library. Every time we came to a Public Works meeting, he had a new library book. So he's not only a great public servant, but he's a, he's a person that takes part in all aspects of our community and a great neighbor. So, thank you, Chuck, for your services.
Thank you so much, Joanna. Anybody else want to say anything? All right, so what I have here is the listing alphabetically in the first name in the proclamation, so I'm going to follow that now, so. So the next one is Cindy Zellers. Well, you want to stand up, and I'm going to say a few words, and then Eileen is going to take over. So I have had the honor of serving with Cindy on the Plan Commission, she's simply an amazing person, person. She has contributed hugely to the planning of the city, and besides that, she also serves on the library board, but that will be some other time. Cindy Zeller has faithfully and honorably served the city of Milton and the Plan Commission for the past 25 years. Eileen?
I hope I don't cry, because she's also a friend, and I'm going to miss her, but I still get to be her friend, right? Okay. We've been so fortunate to have Cindy for so long, 25 years, and I think everything in the proclamation is true, worked tirelessly, but she, she just knows the community so well, she's fair, she's transparent, and she's not afraid to ask the tough questions, even of staff. You know, developers, people involved in the project, every single project she's worked on, which has been a lot in the 25 years, has been strengthened and has prospered because of her.
Thank you.
Cindy, you want to say anything? Anybody else want to say? To 25 years, 25 years! That's awesome! Anyone else? Okay, all right. We are going to move on to the next one is Dennis Dawn. And you want to, is your, is somebody else want to be recognized?
No.
Let's give them a big hand to begin with.
They're celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary, too, so we should
Wow, wow, that's awesome! Well, congratulations.
And I just wanted to say thank you. And Dennis has also been, worked tirelessly and isn't afraid to ask the hard questions, and we're going to miss him, too, just like we'll miss Cindy. He's done an excellent job on the Plan Commission, and, you know, he's been on numerous committees before that, too. So wonderful that people are willing to serve, you know.
Wonderful. So I'm going to read some part, and then we're going to let the other people speak as well. Oh, yes, I'm going to do that. I have had the honor of serving with Dennis both on bike, pad, and transit committee, as well as on the Plan Commission. Did you know he was the drama professor at UW, and did a lot of great things there, and a Yale graduate? So Dennis Dawn has faithfully and honorably served the city of Milton and the Plan Commission for the past three years, and previously, previously on the Public Service Committee for nine years. He has served on the Bike, Pad, and Transit Committee, and then he has served on the Library Board for 10 years. On top of that, he has also served on the Milton City Council. All right, Sean. So Sean, and that will be followed by Mark, and then if anybody else want to say about the library, but, you know, that would be welcome, so.
Good, good, because I've largely known Dennis through his service to the Public Works Committee, but it might have been shorter just to list the committees that Dennis has not served on, including the Council. He's been everywhere and done everything, and we've all benefited directly from what Dennis has done for us, for a very long time, in many different capacities, wearing many different hats. So, so he bikes, and he walks, and he drives, and he tells me about these things. You'd be surprised how many people will grit their teeth and not say something to me. Dennis is not that guy. So, so on a personal level, I really appreciate that, too. Thanks so much, Dennis.
Thank you, Sean. Mark?
Sean and Eileen are tough acts to follow, they said everything. I, I want to thank Dennis, too, for his work on the Plan Commission and on the Ped Bike Transit Committee. Dennis, you will be asked, thank you.
Let's go with Dennis. So the next one is Doris Schroeder. Now, I have known Doris for a long, long time. We served on the Long Range Planning Commission for the Milton Craft Plant Area School District in 1995, and because of her and others' effort, we have the Glacier Middle School, and then we have a, one of the two elementary schools, and of course, she did a lot of other great things as well. And I have the honor to serve with her on the Bike, Pad, and Transit Committee, she cares a lot about Milton. Doris has faithfully and honorably served the city of Milton and the Commission on Aging for 16 years, and previously on the Pedestrian, Bicycle, and Transit Committee for seven years. Doris's knowledge, experience, and hard work, Milton has benefited immensely. So now we'll start with the Commission on Aging. Mike, you want to cover it? Who's going to cover, and then, then, then Mark? Mark, you want to start first? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't realize you were going to ask Mike to speak, so I was prepared to talk about both.
Oh. Okay, let's give Mike a little chance, too, so, yeah, yeah. No, 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 go ahead and speak, but after you.
Okay. Words that come to mind when I think of Doris and her service to the city are, are kind, thoughtful, conscientious, and she has been a huge presence at the Senior Center for
18 years.
18 years.
Yep.
And I know she's really enjoyed working at the front desk there, and she has been a great face for the city in, in her position there and with her work on the Commission on Aging, but more specifically, I've known her through the Ped Bike Transit Committee, and she's been very, provided a very important perspective to make sure that the needs of all Middleton residents are considered as we plan our bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facilities. And I know when I asked her what her favorite memory was of working on these committees, she's just said she's grateful for the opportunity to having learned so much. So she has given, but, but has also thoroughly enjoyed learning and, and share based on her experiences, and so I'm really grateful for her contributions on both committees, and I know Jill Crimes, Mike will probably speak to that, but
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Mike?
Yeah, Jill couldn't, she's in South Carolina, getting the award for the Senior Center Director of the Year from the, the National Association. So we're very honored for Jill, and for the people who have served on the Commission on Aging all of these years and helped to support the Senior Center. And Doris, you've been foremost, I mean, you are, you embody what it means to be a good neighbor in the city of Milton, and I mean that both as a volunteer, as well as my neighbor in the downtown. Doris walking her dog throughout the downtown, always a kind word, always a friendly face, always willing to help, and that, you just can't ask for more in the city of Milton, and I really do think she represents the very best. Thank you, Doris.
So the next one is Jeff Dunn. Is Jeff here? Okay, I got to know Jeff in 1982 or 1983, and his business on the University Avenue is the longest-serving, the, owned by the same person altogether, so. He's very passionate about serving his community and supporting many causes. Jeff Dunn has faithfully and honorably served on the city of Milton and the Pleasant View Golf Course Committee for the past nine years. Jeff's knowledge, experience, and hard work, Milton has benefited immensely. You want to talk about that, Mark?
Sure. Sorry about that, the other microphone wasn't working. So yes, Jeff has served through a time with the golf course that has seen a lot of great changes and great financial gains, and he's been a significant part of that, and of course, he's a business owner in Middleton, and it's great to have a, a business owner take an active interest. That's not easy to do when you're running your own company, as well as doing volunteer service in the community. So Jeff, and Jeff also has a great sense of humor. Those of us who get his occasional cartoons or jokes know what I'm talking about. So let's hear it for Jeff Dunn, who's
So the next one is John D. Piazza. John, you want to stand up and recognize your wife?
This is my wife, Barbara.
Thank you, John. Well, I first got to know John in 2008, when I was elected to the City Council. He's a great member of the community, he's, he, when he holds his views, he's very fearless, and he has the courage to express them, and, which is, which I really admire, and he has contributed hugely to the Milton. So John D. Piazza has faithfully and honorably served the city of Milton and the community for Development Authority for the past 12 years. And I did serve with him past one year, so. And the Public Safety Commission for the past seven years. And he served on the City Council for four years. So Mike and then Chuck, or Chuck and Mike, either way, so.
Well, we could both talk at the same time.
Okay, all right.
But I'll start. Of course, John, as you know, served on the City Council and he did so faithfully. And as you said, Gerdip, with fearless conviction in his viewpoints. But John could disagree without being disagreeable. And I think that is a, a real talent for anybody in public office. You just, you, you would disagree with him, but you still just like him, you know, because he is that kind of guy. He, he intends the best for the community. He comes at it from a more conservative viewpoint than most of Middleton. And that's a viewpoint we need to hear and respect. And John had that respect, both in the City Council as on, as well as on the Community Development Authority. And he's been a great friend of our past mayors as well. And providing advice on the side, smoking cigars, having drinks, et cetera.
I didn't know about that part.
Maybe I shouldn't have mentioned that with Barb here, but.
Mike, compared to the previous, I believe, more all the saints.
And that's not true, John. You know, and, and you've survived health issues while going through significant volunteer service for the community. And I applaud you and thank you for your service.
Well, Gerdip has something more to say, just you wait, so.
Well, John, I want to thank you for everything you've done for the Police Department. John has been an advocate for public safety, specifically the Police Department. As an alder, he was instrumental in getting us the, the beautiful building that we're in. And as a member of the Public Safety Committee, he was always an advocate for the police. As you said, never shied away from an issue. A tireless advocate for us keeping our own dispatch center. And I think we can thank him for that and many other things. So, John, thank you for your service.
Let's give a big hand now. Sean, yes, great guy.
I promise I will keep this brief, but so many good people have come through Public Works Committee and John is one of them too. I don't know if I'm just really hard on people, that, that they're all rotating out, but, but I, I mirror what Mike had said in a, in a slightly different flavor. You know, John would not necessarily just go along to get along. John would have a unique viewpoint. And John would bring reasoning behind that viewpoint. Whether or not his opinion prevailed in a vote, I could really appreciate the depth that he would dive into issues and budgetary impacts of those issues and bring those issues to light. So at least they got considered and discussed fully. And I really appreciate that on behalf of the city. Thanks, John.
Anybody else want to speak? Okay, so the next one is Matt Richards. You have your family here, so all of you please stand up. If you would like. Well, let's give those youngsters a big hand too. I got to know Richard in 2008 when we both served on Conservancy Land Commission. And he uses his words very carefully. He's a great guy. Matt Richards has faithfully and honorably served the City of Milton and the Water Sources Management Commission for the past 15 years. Through Matt's knowledge, experience and hard work, Milton has benefited immensely. So now who would like to speak? Gary is not, okay, Sean.
Not from a Public Works Committee viewpoint, but Gary Huth could not be here tonight. And Matt, you know, on, on his behalf, he would say it a lot better than I do, because he knows you from that commission better than I do. But Matt is a professional at principal, really, at Strand Associates. And so he brings that wealth of consulting experience to the City of Middleton's benefit at all of those meetings. And for a very long time. That is really a brain trust group of world-class subject matter experts. And to fit into a group like that, to walk into a group like that, from my experience, has been daunting. But to fit in is truly amazing, you know. And so from all the experience and all of the advice you've been able to bring to bear, Matt, thank you very much. And Danny, it's good to see you here tonight too.
Hi, Danny. Anybody else wants to speak? So the next one is Steve Hansen. Awesome. Well, I, I guess I did know Steve Hansen, but I didn't associate both the names. But Steve Hansen has faithfully and honorably served the City of Milton and the Workforce Housing Committee for the past 14 years. Through Steve's knowledge, experience and hard work, Milton has benefited immensely. So Mike, you want to?
Yes. Steve is one of the original members of the Workforce Housing Committee. And he stuck with it for 14 years. Steve has brought great expertise from the very start to the committee. And that committee is a real treasure of expertise all around. And on workforce housing, the kind of passion that Steve has for that, as a professional, a banker in the community, willing to serve and dedicated to getting people into a, an affordable housing situation. Steve, you've been a real treasure on the committee. We're going to miss you. And hopefully we'll see you around the community still, both in your banking as well as other volunteer capacities. But thank you very much, again, on the original Workforce Housing Committee and appreciate it.
Wow, that's awesome.
So I just wanted to say a few words about Steve. I met Steve and his wife Wendy when St. Bernard's started our Habitat for Humanity, our first house that we built. And we all got to hammer and nail and do all kinds of things. But he loves his faith and he, and his service to the community is just one part of that. It's very much appreciated, Steve. We'll miss you.
Well, next one is Steve Olson. He told me that he couldn't be here today. So, so the first time I ran into Steve Olson was when I was walking around the Teedmont Pond and he didn't, I don't know whether you knew, he liked, he loves jogging. I guess he loves Teedmont Pond and I probably ran into him many, many times there. And this is, he was still, he was serving on the City Council at that time as well. So Steve Olson has faithfully and honorably served the City of Milton and the Zoning Board of Appeals for the past 15 years. And he has served on the City Council for six years. Who would like to speak? Mark?
Yeah, I, I first got to meet Steve as a fellow bus rider. I don't know if you knew that.
Yeah, me too.
That's how you met him too. That's how we meet a lot of people in Middleton, is on the bus. I used to commute to a different job at the DOT and, and I, that's how I met Steve. He would board the 71. And, and so that's, in fact, I knew him before he decided to run for City Council. So I guess maybe I had a little bit of influence, I don't know. Or he did it despite what I said. And so obviously, he served on the council for six years. And we very much appreciate his service there. And then as he was leaving the council, he joined the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is where I've done most of the work with him. He's served on ZBA for, it says 15 years. Wow, I didn't think it'd have been that long. And, but he's been a, a very solid member of the ZBA and has, has approached his service with a lot of deliberation, a lot of thought. And has been very understanding of a lot of the variance requests because he's a downtown property owner, he and Kathy. And so they understand the challenges of, of adding garages on small lots, for example. So I thank Steve and if you could pass along our, our thanks to him, obviously. It was great having him on the council and on the ZBA.
And getting the traffic lights on Bristol Avenue, that was also Steve's contribution. Mike?
Well, Steve Olson is another good neighbor. I, I wanted to just say that, you know, he, he has been active in these capacities, but he's been also active as the president of the Neighborhood Association. He and Kathy kind of alternated that. And then, and of course, then the Olson seat on the council as well. But Steve was always very insightful with his study and research on issues. He, he always brought to the table well-thought-out ideas and passion for public service and what is good in the community. And not only that, but he's a good friend and a passionate Packers fan. And so we have that in common as well. I've never seen anybody get so upset over Packers games with Steve Olson. So part of my role is to try to, you know, calm him down a little bit. But not in the public sphere, but watching Packers games, right? So let's hear it for Steve Olson.
Okay, so the next one is Terry Turner. Is Terry here? You want to, is your wife there?
I'm here with my wife Judy, who will remain to you.
Okay, well, all right. So Terry Turner has served as chairman of the Pleasant View Golf Committee ever since it started. That is year 2000. He's greatly passionate about our golf course and the golf in general. And he was, when I became a mayor, he was, I wanted to know a little bit more about the golf course and he was so kind to drive me around and he showed me all those very, various intricacies of, you know, how to avoid the ball so that not, don't get hit there, so. So Terry Turner has faithfully and honorably served the City of Milton and the Pleasant View Golf Course Committee for the past 18 years. Through Terry's knowledge, experience and hard work, Milton has benefited immensely and we have a wonderful Pleasant View Golf Course. Mike?
I think it's safe to say about Terry Turner that our golf course wouldn't be the absolute gem in Dane County that it is without his faithful passion and service to the Golf Course Committee. Terry has just taken the golf course as a personal mission in his life. He's brought his business acumen to help with the finances and to ask the critical questions and to ensure that our golf course has now paid off its external debt. And, and Terry, your advice, I know to Jeremy, who couldn't be here tonight because he's at the State Boys Golf Championship.
That we're hosting.
That we're hosting, yes. And would have loved to have been here, but, but for that. And Jeremy has appreciated your guidance as well. And I know Mark Sullivan has, from the committee standpoint. Terry is just instrumental in the success there and we can't thank him enough for his 18 years of service. Thank you, Terry.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to add that I met Terry about five years ago when I first got on the golf committee and saw him as a kindred soul for us both being CPAs. It's an endangered species, I think. He exhibited just enormous experience in running golf operations and also food service operations. Terry, we are grateful for your service and the city will miss your leadership.
Anybody else want? Okay, let's give Terry a big hand. Last, but not the least comes Van Knut with the year. I got to know Van, he may not remember, in 2005. And I remember that City of Milton was competing and how long you could walk or run or jog with the Mount Harbor and so many other cities. And Lori and Van and I, we were on that team there and so have known ever since then. But what he has really done is that ever since he became the director of the Milton Chamber of Commerce, he has made a difference for Milton. Starting with few members, now it's close to well over 600 or 700 members. But with respect to the city, Van Knut has faithfully and honorably served the City of Milton and the Tourism Commission for the past 15 years. Through his vast knowledge and experience and hard work, Milton has benefited immensely. Mike? And anybody else who want to speak too? So this is the last one, so.
Well, Van is the penultimate good neighbor. He not only has been a director of the chamber who works closely in partnership with the city, but you see that as evidenced by his service on the Tourism Commission. And notice that he's here every Tuesday night for City Council, for Plan Commission, and expressing the views of the business community in a tactful, diplomatic way. And we've had a great partnership, not only with the chamber, but with the school district and the triumvirate of the three. And Van is a huge part of that success altogether. I remember in 2007, when the Money Magazine people were here, we had them cornered at the Capital Brewery with a rainstorm. So we got, we got to talk with them and then invite them out to dinner over at Bill Adolche. Van, I think, paid for that dinner. And, and we, we lasted well into the evening, well into the evening with the folks from Money Magazine and then later learned that they, we had been selected as the best place to live. So Van, there's countless things that, that Van does. Part of that through his work, but beyond his work, being here at council meetings, which representing that viewpoint, but serving on the Tourism Commission as well and the guidance and the, the benefit he's given to the Tourism Commission over these last 15 years. Julie, by the way, could not be here tonight. She's recuperating from her knee, her, like I, I like to say, her football injury. But she appreciates the guidance that you've given her as well, Van. Thank you.
Let's give Van a big. So we are going to now.
If I could say something?
Yes, Van.
I, I have to give credit. I didn't bring my entourage tonight. My parents, they raised probably one of the most articulate, handsome, charming, intelligent.
Humble.
Modest.
Humble, modest people on the planet. Oh, that's my brother. He lives in North Carolina. It's been fun to watch tourism go from counting pennies after the, after the, the train adventure many years ago to, to be an organization now that is well-funded, really well-directed, and continues to encourage and facilitate visitor traffic into this community. A lot of money comes into this community through tourism. Commission has been, been focused for quite some time. And I look forward to what they do as, you know, as, as the years, years continue on. But it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the city and wish the Tourism Commission the best. And it's, it's a great community and very happy to be a part of it. So thank you.
I would like to speak, I think possibly for all of my fellow council members, but one of the things that makes Middleton great is our structure of government where the committees recommend to us what should be done. And it's those committee members with this incredible expertise that we've heard about tonight that makes it easy for us to do our job. And what I'm really impressed with is the number of years or terms that you, all of you have continued to volunteer and step up. That is just incredible. I've served with a lot of you and everything that was said tonight is clearly true. I think Matt Richards was the one that I noticed who we left out for a couple of committees, Stormwater Utility Board and Conservancy Lands, which he served on for a long time. But I'm just very, very appreciative for the expertise and the love that you have for this city.
Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, so let's celebrate these, all these great guys. And now we are going to give the, they will give each one of you the proclamation and the clock. And then we will have a cake and cookies and we're going to take a little break here. Would you take some pictures while you're there? Let's, you just press the camera. Okay, I would like the staff member to give the proclamation. Who is responsible for all this?
How about turning around the clock? Yeah. Oh, is your clock backwards? Oh, you gotta retake it.
Thank you, John. Thank you. We had a great time, didn't we?
You're as handsome as always. She got it. No, you did not.
Forgot to mention that you were the founding member of the Curmudgeon Society.
You knew his name. Michael, seven one. Seven one. He was the one.
Oh, yeah.
We forgot to say that you were the founding member of the Curmudgeon Society.
I think they all were seven. Very good.
I said on the... No, there, I said, I go to the flag.
You like frosting?
I don't like frosting.
I am one of those people who always want a piece of cake from the middle so I get as little frosting as possible.
Only good if there's ice cream. But if I have to stop her.
Just throw me that briar patch.
Would you like, please? Are you a frosting guy?
But nobody wants to take that cake. Not to laugh, but you catch her. I was on the bash where I got my rose. I even got the rose. Could have been a contestant.
Me, I'm trying to watch my girlish figure as well. Uh huh.
I did, yes. I wasn't going to, but Sean forces it.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
On both sides of the issue, if the market goes down, we want to reopen.
Okay, guys, let's give a... How are we doing? Are we ready? Let's give a one other big hand to our honorees. Great job! Okay, we are going to move on to the agreements and very shortly. So, we are going to go on item number one. Agreement regarding donation for park planning with the community of Bishop Bay.
I'll move approval is recommended by PRC and Finance.
Any questions or in discussion? All of those in favor of this motion to approve the agreement for the donation of park planning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So, motion passes. So, the next one is, it's again item number two, it's related to this one. This is the agreement with Ires Associates for conceptual site design for proposed woodland park in the future phase of Bishop Bay.
I'll move approval is recommended by PRC and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So, the motion passes unanimously. We are on to item number three. This is the assignment of hanger land lease agreement from Compass Delta Lane LLC to Capital Flight LLC Lot Number Twenty-Nine Thirty-Three Zero-Nine Delta Lane.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, all those favored the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So, the motion passes. Number four, development agreement with Highsite LLC for tax incremental district number three assistance for the Highsite project.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
I will second it.
Mike, you want to say anything?
I just wanted to acknowledge CFO Glenn Johnson is here from Highsite. So, if you haven't met Glenn before, thank you for being here, Glenn. And developer John Livestock and John McEwen will be working together with Highsite on this project. And we've had a long and great history with Johns and Johns' developments. So, we look forward to Highsite consolidating their distribution center with now a beautiful new office building and of course, a hanger at the airport, so a nice triumvirate.
Nice.
Okay, anybody else want to, any questions or comments or say anything? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So, the motion passes unanimously. Item number five, request for increased development, increased developer finance tax incremental district number three assistance from Milton Center Phase Number One.
I'll move that we refer this back to planning. Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Is there a reason you're sending it back?
Trying to get more information from both planning and from the finance staff as to, just in terms of reasonableness of the request and with respect to the overall financing of the agreement. Finance also recommended that we affirm the city's policy of not giving direct assistance to lessees, that would be, again, to the developer. There were a list of questions that planning had a request and I believe those are still, some of them are still unanswered and it was just an attempt to get all those answers and everything back into one package.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Then all of those favor of this motion to send it back to the Plan Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So, the motion passes unanimously. So, the next one is the budget. Twenty nineteen budget development calendar.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So, the motion passes unanimously. We are on to the miscellaneous. Item number one, authorization to fill the senior services director position, Del Krantz is retiring.
Move approval is recommended by Personnel and Finance.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So, the motion passes unanimously. So, item number two, authorization to fill position of public lands group person Dave Beck is retiring.
Move approval is recommended by Personnel and Finance.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So, the motion passes unanimously. So, the next one is the planning zoning. This is the Pleasant View reconstruction preliminary design issues. Mike, you want to take it?
I'll get it started and Sean and Eileen are here to speak for both Public Works and Plan Commission, each of which has provided a recommendation. So, it happened fairly quickly that Public Works and Plan Commission both reviewed the concept for intersections on Pleasant View Road. And it's a design process that's underway. We anticipate sometime in early to mid twenty nineteen, a design concept will be approved. There's a public information meeting, I believe it's June twenty eighth. We'll get more information out about that to you and to the public in the next week or so. But the, these things tend to take on a life of their own and I want to make sure that everybody is thinking through all of the issues. One of those issues that both Jeremy Sobalka and I spoke to in a staff meeting to the engineers designing this project was our very strong concern with a roundabout at Greenway Boulevard and where it accesses the golf course. It presents a bulb that takes away some of the golf course property. One thing I have talked with the Golf Committee about is my advocacy for, to come to the council and ask that we fund through TIF, since this is going to be a TIF-funded project for the city's part, an architect, a golf course architect, to help work through the issues with Pleasant View Road's widening and its potential impact on the golf course. I know Mark and Terry Turner were very concerned about the financial effects, and so was Jeremy, on how the road could affect the golf course. So, what I'm asking for you to do... So what I'm asking for you to do, to consider tonight, is not to recommend that all three be roundabouts there, although there are good policy reasons for doing that. Engineers like the consistency when you have roundabouts that it doesn't distinguish from roundabout to traffic signal to a roundabout. And there are good reasons, there are good policy and engineering reasons for that, but there's also the potential effect on the golf course that could be significant and could cause the city more costs to reconfigure the golf course. I don't know what those costs might be. So it's in, in effect, the fear of the unknown on the golf course because we just don't know. One of the other concerns is a safety feature because the plan is to have a, a wide bike pedestrian facility on the west side of the road. And so for bikers, walkers, strollers, et cetera, how are we going to prevent golf balls from hitting folks who are, are using that? Now, people driving by in a car are somewhat protected by the car, but still, there's always potential damage to cars and there is now as the golf course sits. But in terms of the safety feature and the effect on the golf course configuration, future city costs as well as the finances of the golf course, which we know has been a real gem for us and one that can return a great deal more to the city over time. So Sean can, can present from, you know, what Public Works Committee discussion was. Eileen can for Plan Commission, but my encouragement to you would be to defer any kind of a planning endorsement for Greenway Boulevard at the golf course and, and to provide direction for us to hire an architect that could help us work through the issues of the golf course design. Yes, Joanna?
Um, so, um, I'm very comfortable with having an architect figure out the reconfiguration of the golf course. But I think that we should not put the golf course ahead of safety. And that's what it seems like the trade-off is going to be. In order to protect the finances, maybe marginal, if any, for the golf course, we're going to give up safety because we're not going to do a roundabout and that was pretty strong that those roundabouts were much more helpful in those intersections. And, and you had that unanimous from the Public Works Committee. I don't know what the vote was in the Plan Commission.
It was unanimous.
So I'm, so the advice from the committees, it really were concerned about the safety and the, the plan of it had unanimous decisions. And you're asking us to defer that before we even know what the effect is on the golf course. I think we should go ahead with the planning of the roundabouts and then figure out how the golf course adjusts to that. Because the safety should be paramount over the golf course.
So I'll weigh in on the opposite side. Mike, can you tell us about the F-four regulations concerning the taking of golf course type land?
Sean, can you speak to that?
Improvements? That's the first issue. My understanding of it was that it is generally discouraged.
I, I think it's more than generally discouraged. I, I think the guidance from FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration, is that it needs to be minimized if federal funds are involved. How they determine what we mean by minimize might be a square footage determination, in which case while the roundabout does get closer to the active play area at the intersection to the north, it actually goes away from the golf course. So I don't know to what degree Strand is digging into that issue right now. They did mention at the Public Works Committee that there's a four F concern, but there's going to be in any event. We're going to move the road to the west. The configuration of the intersection has some effect certainly on play. If it were a traditional signalized intersection, I think the westerly road edge would end up in the ballpark, I'll say, of thirty-five to forty feet away from the green of that closest hole. With the roundabout intersection concept that was presented, that's closer to zero feet, right at the intersection. And again, to the north, it actually goes further away, but that's not where people are driving their golf ball. So in, in either case, I think when we start talking about the path safety, there's going to have to be some sort of change at the golf course, whether we're thirty-five feet away or whether we're zero feet away from the green. A golfer like me can easily miss by thirty-five feet. I, I could miss by further, but.
Can you hit it thirty-five feet?
Joanna's seen me golf. Uh, so, so either way, there's gonna be some effect on how the golf course functions, regardless of which kind of intersection is pursued. And, and I don't know what the best answer, all things considered, is, but operationally and for pedestrian and vehicle safety on the roadway system, the roundabout is better. When you factor in what does that mean from a golf course, golf course play and/or aesthetic issue, that might have a different flavor on it. And, and I don't know that. But, but it's going to be close either way.
Emily.
Right, so the golf course, this, this course itself.
Mark.
Excuse me.
Yeah, well, I'm saying Emily will be after you.
But this course, the, the lake course, is worth about a million dollars in revenue a year. And what this is proposing is to just dramatically impact those greens. So it's not just the revenue for the golf course, right? In order for the city to move the roadway into the golf course itself, the city is going to have to transfer funds to the enterprise fund to acquire that property. It doesn't belong to the general fund. You, you're aware of it.
Right.
Right? So there are land acquisition costs plus whatever other impact costs of the golf course. It just seems to me that, that the, the most common sense approach is to make this a, a signal interchange and minimize completely the impact that's going to have on the golf course.
I, I would not say that it eliminates impact on the golf course in either scenario. Both of the concepts push right-of-way acquisition to the west in this area.
Does anybody figure out how much square footage or acreage?
I think Strand has already looked at that.
That's zero point four versus zero point five.
Twenty-five percent increase with for the roundabout, over the point four acres at that intersection.
But, but overall for the golf course, you're talking about an intersection. Here we're talking about the golf course, right?
Right.
Okay.
So from, from the north side to the south side, whatever that boundary on Blackhawk.
Along the frontage, yeah.
On Pleasant View Road. There's a cost of acquisition here that, that doesn't seem to be considered as well.
I don't have that answer. You're right.
Emily.
So when we're talking about either the signal or the roundabout and the change to the golf course, are you suggesting that we get a, an architect for it either way? Because I'm trying to fi- figure out if, if we want to go with the safety first or if we want to go with the architect first. And my understanding is it's going to be impacted either way. Is that correct?
That's what I was suggesting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, my question is that, let's say, you know, Sean, maybe you will know the answer. If we defer it now and hire an architect, what timeframe we are talking about? And the other is, let's say if we prove it and hire an architect, how, how would it go through with those two scenarios?
I, I would imagine, I would envision that an architect really would want to look at both of the scenarios. They're really just concept level drawings at this point. You know, I, I'm not saying that the locations, well, certainly the location of the roundabout is set in stone. It's, it is subject still to modification as actual design progresses. So the physical location of the center of the circle may shift a little bit one way. So I can't say with, with certainty exactly where this would or could end up. I think the direction that's been given to the designer right now is that the City Public Works Committee and the City Plan Commission has expressed a preference for this type of intersection versus the other. That doesn't mean that, that the final design necessarily will have one or the other.
Okay, so let's say if we defer it versus if we prove it, what does it mean? What are the consequences?
I, I think either way, the play on the golf course is going to be affected. Something has to be done to protect people on the path from an errant golf ball. Whether that's thirty feet from the green or zero feet from the green. I, I think there's going to have to be some sort of mitigation in terms of protection from a golf ball.
No, but in terms of the overall project going forward, how does it affect the project if we defer this versus approve it?
I'm, I'm not certain with, what council action would do in terms of the project design. Are you suggesting that the council would tell the project designers to stop work temporarily?
No, of course not. Just only this part, just the roundabout.
Yeah, for right now, all that they've been told is that two city committees have expressed a preference.
Three city committees. Golf has also expressed.
Oh, okay. And I wasn't aware of that one.
So by ordinance, the golf committee is the only one who has advisory capacity to council. Not Public Works and not Planning, right? Golf Course is the only committee that has advisory capacity to the canal, uh, council with respect to golf operations.
Okay.
So it seems to me that both Public Works and Planning should be taking this to golf to try and get their buy-in on it, not the other way around.
I, I can't tell you procedurally how things ought to happen. I just know on a road project, they came and asked the Public Works Committee for an opinion, for some input on how operationally this intersection of the road ought to work.
Mark, yes.
Mark, isn't there plans to hire an architect to evaluate the whole golf course? Weren't you thinking about how many millions it would be to do that in the future?
No, the golf course has no plans to hire a, an architect to do this, right?
No, no, not this.
But weren't they going to be reviewing like the whole?
No.
Okay.
Okay, Mark, you have something to say? Any questions to Sean?
I have just a quick question and it's if, and, and I know both of these are just options at this point, but, um, what, what would be, in your opinion, the difficulties of having, let's say, a traffic signal at this intersection with free-flowing motion of roundabout at all the other intersections? What does that do to the traffic if, if like, instead of having three roundabouts in a row, we have a, a traffic light in there?
They're probably remote enough from each other that operationally, I don't know that there would be an increased problem with operations. I think, I think what the designers are looking at is there's a certain driver expectancy at some point that gets set up when you get into a signalized corridor or a roundabout corridor. But when it starts to be signal roundabout, signal roundabout, that there's a driver expectation that something odd is happening. And, and that's the part that I am not well enough versed to say one's good or bad. I will say that, to my knowledge, the city of Madison has not provided input on the Blackhawk intersection to the south of Greenway. So I don't know whether they will or won't endorse a roundabout at that intersection and three-quarters of that right-of-way is in Madison.
Are they looking at that now to see what?
I, I think they're looking at it now or soon or, you know. Committee meetings don't always line up nicely and so they're just taking what they've got at various stages for input. Uh, there's also a public input meeting and, and so, you know, they want to get input from the general public as well.
Now, is that meeting only for Middleton or Middleton and Madison?
It's Middleton and Madison.
Middleton and Madison?
Yes.
So, um, so maybe Mike or you, if we were to hire the architect for the, looking at the golf course, what timeframe we are talking about there?
That I can't say.
Yeah, I, I don't know how long it would take to engage an architect on this. Maybe three months, two, two months, three months, because we'd have to get council approval of that, Plan Commission on the TIF. And, and then I don't know how long it would take them to do their work. The goal here would be to have a final design ready for approval in twenty nineteen. I think they're geared towards middle twenty nineteen. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sean. So I think we have time to incorporate the advice of an architect on this.
So if we hired an architect, it comes with a certain recommendation, the city council could still change this from whatever, whether it's a light or a roundabout.
I think so because there's a property effect for, for the roadway potentially. To me, it looks like it could be significant and I think we're better safe than sorry to have, hire an architect, have an independent review of this and gauge what that might mean for the, for the golf course.
I guess I have not, don't, I, I agree with you. I don't have any problem with that. So, Mark, you have something to say?
I just want to reinforce what Mike said and Sean. It's obviously a local road. This isn't anybody else's jurisdiction at this intersection, Greenway and Pleasant View. But there are federal funds that we need to have to tap, to pay for the road. The city, neither city can afford to build its road without federal funds. And so that federal funding process requires that certain procedures are followed. Sean, itemized that already. And so, yes, it's the city, there'll be opportunity, I'm sure, for the city to influence which option. It might not be exclusively the city's decision, but I would anticipate it be heavily the city's decision. Hey, Sean, is that a fair summary? And, um, in terms of the impacts at, at, of any particular intersection alternative, whether it's signalized or, or a roundabout, um, you know, we don't know exactly what the impacts are in the golf course. And that's why I think the suggestion of having an architect, a professional architect, quantify exactly the impacts. Obviously, we have a professional golf staff that, that know how the pla- how that hole, I don't remember the hole number.
Who?
Whatever it is.
Hole number, what else?
Which number is it? Second hole.
I think it's a second hole.
Lake two? Yeah. Yeah. Um, so obviously, obviously, you know, any sort of encroachment has some impact. What degree makes it, um, you know, it makes it need to be reconfigured and what options are there for reconfiguration? I don't know that anyone studied that. You know, how wide, can, can the fairway be narrowed a bit? You know, are there certain standards for how wide the fairway has to be? You know, I think some of those things we don't know. And that's why at the staff level, we're comfortable with the idea of, at least I'll say staff, planning staff and administration and I think Public Works are comfortable with the idea of enlisting a professional to advise us for that process. Brian VanderWaal also has weighed in and is recommending the three roundabout alternative, but we don't know all the impacts. So.
So I, I think hiring an architect does seem to make sense, doesn't it? So.
Well, I, that's your decision, but, you know, more information is probably helpful than, than less information and, and, you know, would be how I would look at it.
And by the way, Janet Lord from the golf committee is here. She's the vice chair of.
Janet, you want to say anything?
Well, I think that the biggest impact that if we're talking.
You want to come to the microphone?
One of the areas I think that you have, and if we're talking about safety, is if you're not golfers, you're not then aware of what happens on a golf course. And if we have people that close to the golf course, even with any type of berms or fencing, netting, et cetera, you still are opening up huge liabilities to the city to have people that close. Yes, I know that a roundabout and the intersection, that there's going to be some type of interference. That you can deal with, but a roundabout, somebody pushing a baby in a stroller and a, a golf ball coming is no one's fault, but someone in the city is going to be the recipient of that. So if we're talking about safety, we talk about safety both ways.
So any questions for Janet? So what do you think of that hiring a, well, any, your opinion of hiring a architect to look at the issues, so?
I think I'm, I, I can't speak for whether that is or not, but I am, I'm continually amazed of how many times the decisions, we, as, as a committee member who's been on fourteen years, we, we get the aftermath. Why hasn't this come to the golf committee first before it's come here?
Because we're the ugly stepchild of the golf. That's why.
Exactly.
You know, to, to me, I...
Well, in this case...
I'm tired of doing the aftermath of it, and we try to make do because we, we don't follow how it should be in the process of it.
Okay, s- okay, anybody else? Any questions for Janet?
Thank you.
Well, I can see Prowler's Road project, that's why it went to the public works, so...
Except, except that you're trying to take land away from, from an enterprise fund, which happens to be run, facilitated by the golf committee, right? You're still taking something of value away from the golf course. And there doesn't seem to be any respect for that. And that's, I think, which is most infuriating to the members of the golf committee, right? What we were told at the beginning of this process was that the F-four regulations would minimize, in fact, we were told that there should be no impact to the boundaries of the golf course, that we could reasonably be assured that, that the dimensions that were there currently would not be impacted by this road. And now, we're hearing all of a sudden that planning and public works has decided that there's gonna be this huge infringement of that property. And that's just not acceptable.
I think they may...
Right? So, to me, the, the F-four regulations tell you that you should not be impacting this, the golf course, right? There is an, an unaccounted-for expense for property acquisition, for taking golf course property. There's gonna be expenses for an architect to figure out that, hey, you shouldn't do this, because it's gonna interrupt the operations, right? We're going down this road of spending money when common sense tells you, don't infringe on the golf course.
So, Sean, could you answer, we are following 4F? I mean, as far as you can. I mean, we are, from what I was told, you are moving that road to the east side as much as you can. Is that true, or...
The east side right-of-way exists in the ballpark of fifty or sixty feet wide. The west side right-of-way exists to the width of thirty-three feet. So, we've long contemplated that there has to be, if there's gonna be a significant widening of this road facility, if we're gonna go to a four-lane divided facility, that there has to be some acquisition on the west side. We can, we can isolate this intersection and have that discussion, but, but that is then an isolated discussion. The whole west side right-of-way goes from south of the golf course to north of the golf course to Highway fourteen. And because we've already got this long-term plan right-of-way on the east side, but not on the west side.
So, are we still following 4F?
That says to minimize impacts on parks and recreational areas, which certainly a golf course is part of. Strand does need to look at that. There needs to be a conversation with Federal Highway Administration. But what I don't know is, do they, again, if we'd wanna get just to this intersection, what I don't know is, do they look at just at square footage? Do they look at some sort of more subjective evaluation of what does it mean to impact a golf or public area? Because the intersection getting closer at one point, but further at a different point, may have a bigger impact than just going on a straight line, but to a lesser degree, one way and/or the other. So, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, as to whether this presents an insurmountable or even red flag 4F problem.
Is there any possibility of moving any more to the east side, other than the sixty feet?
There, there is some possibility. In terms of right-of-way acquisition, I would say probably not.
Any other questions for Sean?
Can I ask what the motion is? What are we exactly committing?
There's no motion yet.
There's no motion yet.
Okay, any, well, all right, that's, any questions to any staff members or any...
I just wanna, um, just the fact that they're doing the road that's gonna impact the, the golf operations, it's not because they're moving the driveway one way or the other. It's gonna be impacted, you gotta just, that's the fact. And if you're going to have, if changes are gonna have to be made, it's probably better to do it in conjunction with, with this, with the road project. Not that you don't want to do it, but...
I would, I would disagree with that assessment. I think that there's, that if you, if you look at the plans, um, the expansion is not really taking, if it is a straight-line expansion, right, it's not really gonna impact the golf course.
Well, the construction will, there's...
Well, yeah, aside from blocking the entrance, I understand that.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But that's not, that doesn't involve realigning the entire hole there, right? So, to me, it, it's just, just, so, there's the straight, if you go straight, straightaway there, I'm just looking at that figure three in the, in the packet versus figure four, right? There is probably some buffer between the right-of-way and, and the greens or the, or the fairways. So, that, putting that road in there is not gonna impact golf operations, aside from the entrance. But this roundabout will just disrupt completely Lakes Two. And what you're doing is, is you're, think about it this way, you're jeopardizing an income stream of a million dollars a year. That's really what it comes down to.
That's hyperbolic.
No, it's not.
It really is. Yes, it is.
This course is worth a million dollars a year in revenue.
You're saying that the readjustment in one hole is gonna cost us a million dollars? That's ridiculous.
I, I don't even know what a golf cor- I don't, you may not understand it, but golf course architects are pretty expensive, much more so than a building architect, right? And if he says that you need to do this, this, and this to make this work, it's gonna be an exorbitant amount of money to put this roundabout in.
And one person killed because they got jackknifed on that intersection is worth a million dollars? Are you saying that life is not...
Are you telling me that, that you can guarantee that there's gonna be one person killed because of, there's a...
No, I'm saying that the round, the reason the safety for the roundabout was recommended was because that is exactly what you avoid when you have roundabouts.
Sean, how many people have been killed at that T-intersection today, since, since it was put in there?
You're doubling the traffic on there, too.
Okay, so...
I don't wanna get into discussion about, about vehicular safety on this, I just...
So, to me, it seems there's a pretty good case of hiring a, you know, architect there to look at these issues, so...
No, there doesn't seem to be a good case. Common sense tells you, don't need it. You put the light intersection there and move on. Put the roundabouts at either end...
It's taking some part of the, even with 4F, it's gonna take some land. And so, what, what, what do you leave, lose by hiring somebody having an opinion?
Just trying to save TIF some money, and that's really what it comes down to. You got, we're looking at probably close to a million bucks to get this thing redone.
Yes, Mike, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, on the, below the figure four for the roundabout configuration, if you look down to level of service or existing conditions, it's F. No build, build alternative is F. Revised traffic signal alternative is B. And roundabout alternative is A. So, A, B, and C are all very acceptable from a planning standard. The question is how long it would be at that designation, and that depends on traffic. But, um...
But, Mike, you're only looking at that intersection. It's the, it's the pattern that you're going from roundabout, 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 so that, to the driver, it's a much safer approach than to say, a roundabout, oh, now we're at a signal, then go back to a roundabout. It's just, that doesn't even make sense, especially further up the road that Madison's doing, they're putting in roundabouts. So, the whole traffic pattern will be very safer for the driver, because they'll understand that this is a pattern of roundabout approaches.
Well, if I heard Sean correctly, he said that the distance between the intersections is sufficient that it may not have that drastic of a safety effect. I don't know if, if he feels comfortable saying that for certain, but, you know, I would anticipate there'd be a long green for movement during rush hours on this, both north and south, and that you'd, of course, you'd have the free right-hand turn from Greenway Boulevard onto, so the main effect of having a traffic signal there would slow down southbound movements, left turns off of Greenway onto Pleasantview Road.
Yes, I'm...
I can tell you, I've traveled on the three roundabout way in Mount Horem. It's decent, it flows. Sun Prairie has a roundabout light and a roundabout. It really does, as a driver, it's no big deal. I, I can tell you, either way, it's no big deal. I, I drive my kids around because they have colic, and I used to drive the county, so that's how I got to know it.
Yes, Sean?
Been there. I just wanted to clarify one minor point. What I was suggesting was that I think these intersections are far enough spaced that operationally, they could operate separately. But driver expectation gets more into a safety issue. And so, I, I would say that typically, the leaning is, you get into a zone of intersections, and they should function one way or the other, but not alternating in some odd way. Because that, that gets more into an expectation and safety issue. Operationally, I think they can function independently.
Sean, what do you know about what Madison is doing? When would we know if they're putting roundabout or traffic lights, or what are they doing? When would we know that?
I think they'll be providing input, sort of the same way that we are. There's public information input, there's public committee input, and, and I think they're trying to line up those meetings soon, you know? So, that's not far off, that we're gonna hear from what Madison's preference for Blackhawk is.
Okay.
Are we gonna need to, either way, whichever intersection we go with, it, it's gonna impact the golf course to a certain degree. So, are we going to need to hire a golf architect to look at it anyway, to tell us, either way we go, to tell us what sa- kind of safety measures we're gonna have to put in?
It seems to me, either of these intersections are going west, further than the existing road is, and that we should look, either way, at what sort of safety mitigation we need to be considering for people on a multi-use path.
Okay, any other question or comments? Otherwise, we need some sort of motion, so...
I'll move that the council recommend a, a light intersection at this intersection and the roundabouts at the north and south.
Okay, need a second? Okay, so, there's no second.
Well, I would move that we hire a, a golf architect to look at what the issues would be for both scenarios, the straight or the roundabout.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Any question or, okay. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, or the motion passes?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Motion passes sixty-one. Do we need to do anything more, Mike, or that's it on this one?
That gives us direction.
Okay.
Start working toward that end.
Okay.
I'll, I'll work with Jeremy and try and find an architect that would be able to review this.
Okay. So, the next one is the committee appointments. The number first one is the confirmation of Moore's recommendation of our citizens' appointment with the public works committee. There's only one change, Carrie Shapler is appointed, so, is the motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, or the motion passes? So, the second one is the confirmation of the library board, Jocelyn's board, so it's a, a reappointment of Robert Selsa to the library board.
I'll move a approval. Second.
Okay, any question or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, or the motion passes, and anyone opposed, the motion to adjourn?
Motion approved.
We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.